Alright, it is 4:30 so we'll go ahead and get the meeting up and going for the work session. Thank you guys for being here, I appreciate it very much. I know the agenda we had advertised, the first thing on the agenda was for community wildfire defense grants. Clayton Preble with, what station is my name appropriate?
Ten.
Ten, Station Ten. Their community's been working with Ventry and Big Canoe to kind of work together to apply for a couple grants. So he wanted to address the board, but I don't see him yet. So we'll move that to the bottom of the agenda. If he comes in during the meeting, we'll bring him in to do that and we'll get that portion handled as well. But without him here, we'll go ahead and get the rest of everything going through.
I might have been playing that last next week. I met with John Tarantino today, he was telling me he was meeting y'all next week. So I don't know if they got their days mixed up.
I'm looking at the email, this shows where we've talked about being tonight, but direction. Pick on our card, he'll be here on the 21st.
That has to be your fault.
Sure was. After next, we will have an update on that grant during the work session. At one point in time, and I know why that happened, at one point because we knew we had to call a meeting next week, on next Thursday, we were gonna move this meeting next week. We had a couple of items that we needed to make sure we got handled today, so we didn't move the meeting. So that was why that got crossed up in that conversation back and forth. I just didn't catch it when the agenda got posted. Whether it was Lisa's fault or not, it's ultimately my responsibility and it's my fault. I'll take full blame for anything.
That must have been going around that whole lot.
I'm the one that approves the agenda, so we'll get that. So we'll move on into our normal department process of going through. We do have one thing on the agenda that's a little different than just our department head updates. I know Ms. Bethany has got some different fee rate schedules that she wants to go through for the planning and development side. So just to make sure for the interest of time, I'm gonna let Bethany go first so she can go through that. And then we will go through and do department heads right after we get finished. This will be part of the department head update for planning and development. I know they've also provided each of the board members with the stats showing the percentage increases. And the number of permits, August apparently was up 51% from August of last year. So we had a very busy month back there in their office, which is probably gonna be a big part of what she's wanting to present and go through. So I'm gonna let Bethany take over and that way if you guys have any questions, y'all can respond with us.
Alright, the following information is derived from a number of relevant sources. Planning and the fee schedule, we use a lot Cherokee and Dawson County's numbers. We also called other surrounding counties, White, Gordon, Bartow, all of those, and got their fee schedules as well. Ours are definitely less than most other people's, so that's one reason we need an increase. Some of the fees that you will see are significant, some of them are brand new. The increases are needed to keep up with the growth we are expecting. The Office of Planning and Development is responsible for implementing all billing permits, residential and commercial, performing all billing inspections and enforcement, land disturbance and its associated inspections and enforcement, business license including short-term rentals, which we have excluded in our company, all rezones, conditional use, special use, variances and appeals. And the cost associated with one of these hearings has increased advertising being one of these. All flats are filtered through our office, flats are very time consuming to review. We look at subdivisions, lot splits, commercial developments, lot combinations, boundary surveys, and the list goes on. If you are going to build, develop, or do business or work the land, our office handles almost every step required. The Fire Marshal review fees are a new addition. Once a plan has been approved for commercial construction, any changes made to that plan must be reviewed by the Fire Marshal and a plan reviewer. There are sometimes numerous changes being made to a plan that must be reviewed. The Fire Marshal also reviews all residential subdivisions to ensure compliance. Land disturbance is another area in which new fees are proposed. This is for residential, single-family mobile homes, new construction, remodels, additions, pools, storage buildings, garages, et cetera. Can you read it?
Well, the proposed came down on top of the top line, so I was trying to see.
Oh, it did then.
Yeah.
Now let me tell you what that noise is.
Have the formatting adjusted when we copy it again.
Okay, currently we do heat is per feet, it's 22 cents per heat per feet, 15 cents per unheated square foot. We are proposing to go to 30 cents heated and 20 cents unheated. Certificate of occupancy, $150 minimum. The resident, as you can see down here, we basically increased these by like $25 a piece, I think, or right at that. Currently, pre-moved mobile homes inside of Pickens County is $125, we're proposing to go to $300. Pre-moved mobile homes outside of Pickens County currently is $125 plus 58 cents per mile round trip. We are proposing to go to $300 and 58 cents a mile per round trip. Re-inspection fees, currently we charge $50 for every re-inspection fee that we have. We would like to go to 75. Renewal fees, right now a renewal fee for a building permit is $100 if it's unexpired. We would like to go to $200, unexpired only, and then after expiration date, a new permit will be required with all new fees and required paperwork and application. Stop work order processing is new, $150. Commercial permits are $200 at a minimum. Their current fee schedule on heated square footage is 30 cents, for heated and unheated is 20 cents. We are proposing to go to 40 cents heated and 30 cents unheated. And certificate of occupancies have also increased. We are wanting to go to structures up to 5,000 square feet. Right now it's 0.075 per square foot, and we just want to increase that to 0.080 per square foot. So they only let out probably maybe a nickel a piece, not very much. Plan review fee, reviewed by building inspector or third party. Buildings up to 5,000 square feet currently we only charge $150, we are proposing to go to $300 and a new $100 Fire Marshal review fee. Resubmissions, new, those are new, $150 for us and then $150 for Fire Marshal review. Buildings over 5,000 square feet, currently they are $250, we are proposing to go to $500 plus the new $250 Fire Marshal review fee. A tenant change, we don't normally charge for those, but other counties do, and we are looking at wanting to go to $250 for those. Resubmissions or changes, $250 and $150 Fire Marshal review. Re-inspection fees, they're $50 also, we would like to go to 125. Renewal fee after 12 months, currently it's $200 if they're unexpired, and we would like new square footage fees if permits do expire. All changes in commercial plans are required to be reviewed by the building inspector or third party and the Fire Marshal. Plan review fees will be charged for each new submission. Miscellaneous permits, these will be like your electrical only, your tower permits, sign permits, access encroachments, those sorts of things. Residential currently is $50, we would like to go to 75 for electrical only. Commercial electrical only is currently at $150, we would like to keep that. Tower permits, new construction, currently $2,625, we're not moving, changing that one. Modifications or co-locates, $500 currently, want to go to 750. Application fee, $1,000, we want to keep that $1,000. Sign permits, currently $3 dollars per square foot, we would like to go to $100 plus $3 dollars per square foot. Landfill permits are currently $2,000, we would like to go to 4,000. Access encroachments, new access is $100, we would like to go to 150. Existing is 50, we would like to go to 75. Commercial is new, we would like that to be 250. And re-inspection fees on each visit currently is supposed to be $50, we would like to do 75. Standard copies, 25 cents, we would still charge 25 cents. Flatter copies are $15, we would like to go to 12, and each additional copy $5. Flatter copies, black and white, $10 currently, we would like to keep that, and each additional copy $3. Chicken houses, currently we charge $500 per chicken house, and we would like to go to 600. Business license, $100 per year, proposed $150 a year. Short-term rentals, currently they are the same as a business license at $100 a year. We would like to go to $300 per unit per year. Dawson County does the same thing, and we do share Big Canoe with them, and that's where a lot of theirs is out. Zoning letter verifications, currently we charge $50 and would like to go to 75. To fill out a DRI and send it in, $200, those take a little bit of time too. Land disturbance, currently we charge commercial land disturbance fees at $500 plus $10 an acre. We would like to go to $1,000 plus $10 an acre. All commercial developments regardless of acres will be required to pay this fee. Subdivision, $500 currently plus $10 an acre, we would like to do 750 and $10 an acre. All new subdivisions that find as minor or major will be required to pay this fee. That is more than three tracks, lots, splits, that kind of thing. Modifications, $250, all modifications to one of the above would be required to pay this fee. Single lots outside of common development, we would like to do $250. Tertiary permits, we would like to do $250. Site disturbance prior to issue a land disturbance permit, double permit fees, that's what most counties do. Stock work order processing, $150, and the NOI per disturbed acre for soil erosion, $40. That's in the EPD thing. Flat approvals, lot split combination adjustments, not in a minor or major subdivision, one to two lots, currently we charge $50, we would like to do 100. Preliminary flat submission, common development subdivision, minor or major, currently it's $500 plus $5 an acre, we would like to do $500 plus $10 an acre. Final flat submission, common development subdivision, minor or major, currently $500 plus $5 an acre, we are proposing to go to $750 plus $10 an acre. And modifications, currently we charge $250, we would like to charge $350 to any flat sent in for review, recording, et cetera, after it has been reviewed, approved or recorded. Rezones. Conditional use, special use, variances, appeals. Currently agriculture is $300, propose to go to $500. Small agriculture, $300, we would like to go to $500. Estate residential, currently it's $400 plus $10 an acre, over 10. We would like to do $750 plus $10 an acre over 10. Suburban residential, $500 plus $10 an acre, currently we would like to go to $750 plus $10 an acre over 10. Urban residential, currently it's $500 plus $10 an acre, and we would like to go to $750 plus $10 an acre. SPC, currently it's $2,500 plus $10 an acre over 10, we would like to keep that. SRPC, $2,500 plus $10 an acre over 10, we would like to keep that one. Neighborhood commercial, currently it's $750 plus $10 an acre over 10. We are proposing to go to $1,500 plus $10 an acre over 10. Highway business, currently it's $1,250 plus $10 an acre over 10. We are proposing to go to $2,500 plus $10 an acre over 10. Industrial, currently $1,500 plus $10 an acre over 10. We are proposing to go to $3,500 plus $10 an acre over 10. Conditional use, special use, that kind of thing, currently it's $500, we are proposing to go to 750. Variances are $500, we would like 750. Appeals are currently $500, and we are proposing to go to 750.
So I know if you and Bethany pointed it out, we're just saying proposal. What we're hoping to do is just have them be able to come and present so that you guys can see the numbers. It's something that we've been behind, I know this was brought up two and a half years ago. We had a similar conversation in a work session, probably it was prior to either of you being here, and it was kind of tabled at that time and not brought back up. It's not been updated for many years instead of steadily changing. So some of these are significant jumps, some of them are minor jumps, and some of them are staying the same. What I had asked Bethany to do would be to present a proposal to each of you so that you can review it over the next few weeks. When we come back in in two weeks, we can either put it on the agenda for the regular meeting to vote on, or we want to bring it back as another work session discussion now that you've had time to see it and digest it, to then ask some questions, because I know that it just got handed to you. So trying to ask a lot of questions is gonna be difficult and challenging to say where to just come from with that. But then you can make notes and we can have an opportunity to discuss it. It's not something that we're trying to make an immediate shift on. But as you can see when we talked about the number of permits that are going up significantly, one of the things that's cost us a lot more this year was we had a private enterprise that was doing our commercial inspections and did residential for a period of time. We had to pay out of pocket for those inspections, but we were still charging the old rate on the permits. Well, the old rate when it's a staff member is a little bit different because you can use them differently when you're paying by the hour for an outside third party to come in. It builds up really, really quick, so that was one of the things that kind of brought this up. To get it back on the table, it's a proposal. If y'all have questions right now, feel free, go ahead. I know it just got dumped in your lap, so I'm not expecting that anybody has had time to digest it and come up with solid questions. But if you do dive in, we'll pause here so that y'all can jump in for sure.
I don't have anything right now, but I probably will.
It'll be going through and highlighting. I think that you guys got a PDF version uploaded into your board files, so you've got access to fully and see exactly what was on the presentation. Maybe not, some of the formatting areas I think happened whenever we copied it into the PowerPoint for the presentation in here. It didn't keep her formatting the same, so.
Do you know how long we've been on the B schedule? I know he said several years, but do we know how long we've been?
November of 2020. That's when it was adopted.
But I think even at that time, it was super, super minor changes. I think it's been minutes since we went in and adjusted all of these. I think the last time it was only a couple of the residential square footage fees and the commercial square footage fees. I don't think we looked at the rezones and the different, everything other than permits. We looked at permits and that's pretty much the variations that I've seen.
Thank you. I'll leave the maximum note too, that was a lot to digest.
And I knew it would be, but I thought let's just go ahead and get it all on the table at one time, then you can go through and start really marking it up. Obviously, you know that you guys can email Bethany or Ashley or their office and reach out to ask questions. Between now and the next meeting, that way you're more prepared when we come in, or if you want to save those questions when you all get in here, we'll make sure they're prepared at that point.
How many of those modifications are we actually losing money on now?
Well, I'll tell you that the plan review is the biggest one that we're losing money on now, especially as we're getting more commercial projects coming in, you know, they're trickling in more and more. Right now, we are paying more money to the third-party companies that we're using for our plan reviews than they pay us. So like we just did the assisted living facility out at Steve Tate. When we did that plan review, that went to them, and they charged by the hour, and it's like a 65,000 square foot building, and we charged $300 for the plan review on that, which is probably nowhere near what should have been charged.
And subdivision modifications, flat modifications, those take time.
And I think with the change on some of the rates, even on the advertising per zone. Like if you do a small ag or something.
Cheaper, yeah, the rezones that are a little bit cheaper, like the ones that are $300 right now, which is ag and small ag, those we would plan on.
You need somebody up in progress that can cut you a deal.
The progress is part of a really strong lobby group that gets the thought and they think that go to legal and a rate that is already set by law. He can always support it with state law and say, this is what it says you have to pay. But in putting the signs out, we try to go above and beyond on the signs. I know you can drive through some other counties and look at their rezone signs and their yard signs, like a political yard sign that you can't read. Ours, I think that they do a really good job to make sure they're legible. They are reusable, but there's a lot of time that goes into the way that they're done to get those out there. But I don't really want to see us back down the quality of that. I know some of the counties that they're moving through so fast, that's really the only option they have. I don't think we've been a place that requires downgrading that. But that's one of the areas to do.
You've honestly put a lot of work into that, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. Alright, so every other department head, if you'll have your PowerPoints ready, we'll go ahead and get this. We won't go quite that far. Before I go to Brian, I'll point out that we were all present at a town hall meeting. Was it just last week or was it before? It seems like it was very good, but it also feels like you've been in a meeting nonstop. I thought it went very well, I think the crowd was very positive, they gave good ideas. I mean, they told us how they felt, they told us some things we wanted to. But I don't think that it was presented in a way that was negative at all. I'm looking forward to next week meeting with the advisory board for Parks and Rec so that we can kind of take and digest what was presented at the town hall and kind of roll that into real digestible pieces for how we can go forward. I don't know if y'all want to talk about town hall before we're done in?
I just didn't know what you said, I thought it was very productive.
So along with that, we'll have, you know, that meeting on the 13th. And this month will be very busy for us on the youth front. We'll have, we're hosting three times this month, football games. Usually it's about 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM day at the high school football field with youth football. So we'll have those games throughout the, every Saturday except for this Saturday in the month of September. We also started registration for basketball, that went live on Tuesday. So as soon as football will be done with, we'll be rolling right into basketball. So registration is going on right now. Make sure you bring your, come to the rec center and get them signed up. We'll be running that through about the middle of October. We'll do skills evaluation and practices start first November, so busy, busy.
Didn't see basketball, basketball's already being raised.
It's here, it is here.
I mean, college just played one game.
I know, it never stops, it never stops.
Eddie Parks questions, I know he's had to be with us quite a bit, so excited for next week.
Yeah, looking forward to that.
Phil?
Yep, we got water going. Been pretty busy, we're finally trying to get caught up on our meter sets. We've had to back off from helping. We're currently four staff members short, so we've pretty much just got one crew running everything. So getting caught up on that, and I think we're going, the Price Creek Road West, Price Creek Road West project is gonna be started in about two weeks. Still trying to work out a dilemma at the creek, how we're gonna get across it. So once we get that figured out, then hopefully it hasn't figured out before they get started. I've got an idea, I've got to get some prices, gotta give a you, gotta give a Bill, gotta give a Kirk. So yeah, it's gonna be a team effort, but we've got to see what's gonna be the best cost to get across that creek. I think that's it. Oh, and we got a new bush pump station coming, probably about four weeks for the Black and Auburn. For those folks that's been, for those folks that's been patiently dealing with us for the last three or four months. So we've got it coming, and then once it gets here, it'll probably take about a week to get it completely installed and online. That's about it, anything, I don't know.
Water questions, complaints?
No complaints, please, it's closed, it's closed.
He catches mine on a daily basis.
I say one nothing likes the Kirk.
I almost felt guilty even looking at Kirk's face, because I knew the setup on that one, but.
I was trying to throw the ball to Kirk if you didn't see that, I mean.
Stacy, do you have anything from Board of Directors that you wanted to update on that I don't skip right by you?
We'll start early voting for the city of Jasper and city of Nelson, October the 16th and go through November the 3rd at the rec center. Brian cannot wait for us to get there.
Grab a lot of excuses, basketball's.
Trying to forget about it.
No, okay.
Alright. Mr. H.
We're still grinding brush. No, we are making progress and we are slowly getting back to our normal operations. We've got about 87 of 126 roads cleaned up, so we've made a sizable dent in it. And a lot of the ones now, we've got most of the hardest hit areas, so a lot of them are just, you know, one here and there. They're scattered real bad, and it takes time to unload, grind this one load up, move the next one. It's just a lot of moving. But we are slowly getting back to normal operation, and we got the grader back up and going, we got boulders out bowling too. So we're trying to kind of balance, you know, everything that needs to be done and prioritized. We did have a meeting this week with CW Matthews. Unfortunately, they've pushed us off again on our paving to October 2nd is the date that I've got on paving. Don't shoot the messenger. But that's what they're telling us on our paving project, and they're predicting four to six weeks once they start, they're gonna start on Cove Road, get it knocked out, and then move to the drift from there and do that along with, you know, our other little side roads that we had done. But there again, it's contractors, I have no power over contractors.
Any questions? I know I'll piggyback on that, when we actually posted that, we saw some questions get popped up about State Route 53. Our office has been working with DOT on a regular basis. We've reached out through our state representative, we've reached out through multiple sources trying to reiterate the state of the road. I know most of the complaints are coming on 53 West, starting at 518 to like 400 City, but even 53 East, we're getting similar calls, just not as frequent. But they are fully aware, we've, I know Kirk had a call with them today and reiterated again everybody's concern about trying to get that squared away. So it's, we're not trying to pass the buck by saying it's a state highway, but it is a state highway, and we're trying to let them know the condition of it. They came out and looked at it, they're pacting a few places in one area. Probably not one of the worst areas, but they are working on one area that they're starting tonight.
And he said they should be done by Friday night, 2:00.
So they're gonna do the pacting on the state route during the overnight hours instead of during the day, so it's a little bit less traffic and it's easier to navigate through there. I think Kirk actually had a conversation about Cove Road when we get to that part of the project, especially since it's starting early October when it's our busiest time for people driving through there. The possibility of seeing if we can work out the details to do it the same way. But we won't know for sure for a little while, so I'm not, that's not a promise, but we are trying to work it out to where that could be done in the evening and not affect schools and everything. That's one reason we always try to get our bids out in time to where we do our summer paving in the summer when school's out. But our summer paving this year is gonna be in October, so we're doing summer a little late. But hopefully it'll still stay on task. The team seemed great, they had a whole team of people that came up to meet. I think they definitely know what they're doing, they've been pushed back, all their projects got pushed back because of the rain that was earlier in the summer. Any questions for Rover, I think you hit him up already.
I got more, but. It's already, he already held them.
Alright, I think you covered the bulk of it. I know the roads, I know your crews gotta be so tired of chainsaws.
And we gotta thank the fellow today, they pitched in, helped a bunch.
Should have been emailed for it. They looked tired the other day.
They went wore out last week, 90 plus, and then running chainsaws and grinding all day. Usually at evening, they're laughing and cutting up, I mean, they were dragging.
Is Easter wood, Donald Wood?
Just don't be worried.
Oh, taking that no further. I know, I was thinking, okay. Anybody else, what all other departments we got? Randy, you want to update us on the software?
No, it's going really good. I was actually gonna say, let me just go ahead and speak in this meeting and say that I am surviving and everyone else is surviving, fine.
That's good to know.
It is very good. It is very good. So, I did send out an email today to department heads, um, we're supposed to have a go-live date of September the twenty-fifth. Um, want to give everybody a little bit of peace of mind, this is, this is going to be a group effort, it's going to be kind of painful because this has been going on, this software's so outdated. But, um, just know that we're, we're going to get through it together. Um, go-live means the core financials part of this is going to be what starts first. So, the next six months are going to be interesting. Yeah, it's going to be interesting. I would like to say, I know that a lot of, all the county employees have access, well, they should have, they probably don't, ETR, our documents. Please know going forward that this is probably, as far as your pay stubs, any of that, is going to be the end. Just let all your employees know, um, that that's going to be the, the last part of the puzzle, that they will have the access to be able to do this. Uh, department heads, clerks, any of that, will all, they'll have access immediately to be able to go in and do what needs to be done on a daily basis, but. Document recovery is going to be at the end of March. Other than that, that's all I have, finance, everything else is flowing, we're all good. Any questions?
When, and I'll, on one thing, and I know that this came up in, in several different posts about the quarterly finance reports, and we've not been posting those online, and there's actually a purpose behind it, and it's part of why we're doing the software, so that it can generate the reports in an understandable fashion. Currently, if we run the report, and, and anybody can do an open records request in it, but the way that it's actually calculating encumbrances appears that we're spending more than what's actually been spent in the report. It's showing the things that are encumbered for the rest of the year, as if it's already been an expenditure that's showing up, and so it's, it's not creating an accurate number that anybody can understand. So, with the go-live date of the new software coming in, the plan is, this is supposed to produce, uh, amazing reports. I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons that, that Tower Technologies was the group that we went with, because there's very interactive for the board members. You guys will actually have access to a dashboard that you can go in and see live.
Real time.
Updates, real time. You'll be able to actually look at that information, and it'll separate out those encumbered, encumbered expenses that are for future expenses throughout the year. It won't look like they've been actual expenses, what, which is what's happening right now. So we're, we're, we're trying to be as transparent as we can in the meetings, we're trying to give out the information, we've posted the budget, we've posted the audit. But as far as the actual posting of individual reports, we're waiting for the software so that we can produce real reports that people can gather and understand what they're looking at. So it's not that we're trying to, to not do it, we'll, we'll create a regular ongoing update to where those are posted way more frequently. But this software actually creates the ability to do that, and, and right now, I'm afraid that we would significantly confuse people because they would look at the budget and look at this, and it looks like you're over budget when in reality, you're encumbered throughout, uh, the year. So, does that make sense? Yeah. Y'all may get the que, I get the question frequently, so I, I just didn't want it to be something that we're all not on the same page. But that is one of our targets, is to, how do we add another layer of transparency to regular ongoing updated financial information? And this software is, is supposed to produce that. Um, I know, given working with Randy, looking through all the departments, right now, all our departments are doing incredible, it's staying dead on task. I mean, we've, we've only had a couple that are, that are having some issues with overtime or something, that, that just is the nature of, of staffing, but. For the most part, everybody's doing a really good job managing their budgets, and we don't want to brag on them too much, because it's only September, and we need them to do it for one more quarter. So, uh, we've, we've definitely tried for the last few years to get away from the mindset of the, the government mentality of if you have to spend it a few years, they'll take it away from you. We, we prefer you to save all you can, so we can get fund balance, or we can fund any capital improvement projects, and we try to pass that information on to department heads to... The better we manage it, the better shape we are in, to where we can approve the budgets to continue to move forward, so, um, that's my, so, but...
Hopefully, at the end of this month, we'll be able to generate those reports, and this is, we're going into the third month of this quarter, so.
That's right, you get to go, you get to do the, the first report next month, so.
I want to just piggyback off of that, uh, I want to thank Miranda, number one, for the emails she sent out today for the training.
Yeah.
Uh, because if you've not been in the training and you've not seen the software, it's going to be intimidating. Uh, because you, you go in it, and you're not like, what do I do? So whoever's doing the POs or the, I've been in twenty hours of training already and got forty-five more to go. Whoever's going to do the POs, I, you need to do that training. The first training is three and a half hours, but it's going to get you so familiar with the system, but once you learn it, it's going to be like cakewalk. I mean, it's going to be easy, uh, because when I first took the first training, I was like, I was lost. But then you get entered, and they actually take you into the software, and you're doing work, and so you learn it, but to send that out, I didn't know, so. Yeah, and they ain't but like six seats per class, so you're going to be in the, end of November if you don't hurry up, because it was already filled up through November shh, twelve.
And again, our go-live date, September the twenty-fifth, doesn't mean that everything's just going to stop, we're still going to have the same processes that we have. It's just going to, it's going to take a minute for everyone, so the more you can familiarize yourself with that, it's going to be good for everybody involved.
But just don't get shell-shocked when you see it, because you, I promise you, you will. I mean, but once you learn it, you're going to be like, I, I see Stacy on my...
I won't take no care of you for just a second, because the first training class that she went through, you could see it in her look on her face, like, oh my God, look at that. She's now gone through, but there's going to tell you how many hours of training she's actually spent in it. The more time you really spend, it's replacing three different systems.
That's...
We currently have three different software systems that you're having to do duplicate and duplicate work on, and on the front end, and the finance department's having to do duplicate and duplicate work. It's, it's making it where once it's done, it's done, and it creates where we've, we've, we've got a true accounting of it. Um, so it, it, the problem is, everybody's used to those three systems, and so to transition from those three to the, to the new one, uh, is going to be, you know, it's like teaching your parents how to use a new remote control that controls everything in the house, that, that, it's a great tool, but they don't know how to, how to use the buttons on it, like, uh, sorry, mom and dad, I think. Forget Mary's recorder, damn, quote that one, and all that, it's evil, it's something like that.
Well, for the folks that are just tuning in though, the core part of our financial, our accounting that everybody here has to deal with, well, not the more finance part, but the, the basis core of this has not been updated since when, we took it on, early two thousands?
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's super outdated.
It's an house agency system, and they're, they're version of what updated, required all new servers, all new everything, and so when we, when we did go with this, it's, it should be something we're all going to be very proud of.
That's why...
If we all don't, you know, flip out in the process of...
It's okay, we're going to have a server, it's fine, we got this, we're legally, it's fine.
I, I do commend you on your email though, it was, it was, it was a calming email to send to everybody, but, um. Any finance questions that you guys have got?
No questions, just excited to see you.
And then I know elected officials are submitting their budgets to you over the next couple of weeks, so you should have all those coming in.
Yep, had a couple conversations with different ones, working through some stuff, pulling some more documents, um, but yeah, everything should be submitted by the end of next week.
We've got the information on health insurance numbers should be finalized in a couple of weeks, and then we're also working on our property liability quotes, so that we know where we stand, so that as we get through that, like the process, we've got real numbers that we can, we can operate off of. Um, those are, from talking to other counties that are on different cycles than us, with ours being a calendar year that ends in December, there's some that ended in July, some in October, they've already got those numbers, and so there were some counties that were talking about the increases on some of the different rates, and they're trying to get those finalized right now, as we get, but we should be there very soon. Alright, yes sir.
While you're talking software, computers and everything, we've got a hardware update that has to be done. We have to get the new SQL server that we've been looking at getting for the last three or four years. We've now been advised, I just saw IT run out the door of that...
He say you raised your hand.
Yeah. So anyhow, just let you know, that's gotten to the point where they will not support that old one anymore, so we do have to have that hardware updated.
I actually had a meeting with IT just the other day, and they, they, they put that on the calendar, or on the, the schedule for what they're, uh, working on. Everybody else good?
Thank you. Board of Commissioners for your town hall meeting, focusing on recreation, I think that was needed, that was really good. Thank you, anybody affiliated with Sheriff Department for Jeep Fest and all the sheriff's auxiliary.
Thank you.
Makes you proud of being Pickens County, Georgia, when you see stuff like that going on. I'm done.
Well, I'd like to quote one of our participants this year, "It went as smooth as the Chick-fil-A drive-through."
It's hard to get that to talk.
I said, when you're compared to God's chicken, you've made it.
It's kind of funny, I went to town Saturday, I believe it was, and drove to town and back, I checked at the grocery store, and counted two hundred, and this is where I'm a nerd, I counted two hundred and seventy-two Jeeps from my house to the grocery store and back to my house, so, um, and not, wasn't even going anywhere near where, where you guys were.
It was a success, and it's a community effort, for sure nowadays, it's a community effort, and we appreciate all the help and support and prayer, prayed for good weather, anybody and everybody, thank y'all.
Well, good. It is five, well, general discussion wise, do you guys have anything to come on, bring up? I know we got an agenda set for the meeting coming up, but we will, uh, we will adjourn the work session and then come back together at five thirty for our regular meeting. This is probably one of the few times that our work session agenda appears to have had more on it than what our actual meeting agenda has, but we do get to recognize some employees and, um, some promotions when we have a regular meeting, so we're looking forward to doing that.